Okay, welcome. First order business is to call the meeting to order tonight, 7:33. Are there any additions or corrections for the agenda, folks? Anything?
Yes.
Yes? What do you got?
No policy tonight, we're deleting it.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Next on the agenda is the members of the public. If there's anyone here who's not, who's here to speak to something other than the draft plan, which is the bulk of this meeting, and you want to be heard on some other matter, I would welcome you to, you know, speak now. If it's just for the, if it's for the draft plan, then there's another space in the meeting where you can speak. Everybody, the draft plan, right? Okay. Does anybody have any correspondence for the board that they've received? I don't have anything. Okay, all right. Before we, actually, we're all gonna speak at some, what the heck? We'll introduce ourselves. I'm Joe Winrick, I'm the chair of this board. I am a representative on this board from the town of Townsend. And we'll quick introduce ourselves and then we'll get started.
Emily Long from Newfane.
Purielton, Jamaica.
I'm Bill Antone, superintendent.
Lori Garland, business manager.
Hi, Jimmy Kusak, director of curriculum instruction.
Stephanie Haincock, director of special ed.
Al Clausen, Townsend.
Trish Scott, I'm one of the at-large positions.
Peter Barris, reporting secretary.
Christina Robinson, Jamaica.
Lindsay Bertram, Newfane.
Mike Foley, Townsend but at-large.
Ken McFadden, Newfane.
And last?
Oh, Big Show Donald Perkman.
Okay. I'm not for the center. Okay, so, welcome to the West River Modified Union Education District meeting. Before we get started, I just wanted to take a moment and talk a little bit about how tonight's meeting should work. You know, I expect many of you here to participate in the conversation about the new district. Actually, all of you, not here to participate in the conversation about where the new district will go with respect to the education of its students. Because of the sheer number of people that were here, we'd ask you to try and limit your questions and comments to two minutes, and also to allow as many people to be heard as possible. We'd appreciate it if you'd try and speak only once. We have note cards available in the back, and strongly encourage everyone to write down all questions and comments, even if you address them to the board tonight, so that we make sure that we put them in our mix of questions. We have people, we have someone recording that and keeping track of it, and we will eventually, we're keeping those records, and we will address them as we can. Okay. Also, before we begin, I just want to clear out some things. Based on the feedback that I've been getting, there seems to be a perception that the plans presented at the last meeting are much farther along in the process than they are at this point. Based on the Act 46 Study Committee finding that a more unified governance model is more likely to put us in a position to build on the strengths and connections of the present in order to meet the challenges in a way that take advantage of the opportunities for student learning and organizational efficiencies, along with the vision statement of the West River, uh, West River Board, and the written goals that we spent the last year developing, we tasked our administration to give us a draft plan of what this district might look like to meet our goals and fulfill our vision for the students. We got exactly what we asked for, and I want to really thank them again for their thoughtful work and their creative solutions. Now, was this proposal a shock? You bet, to everyone, including the board. Does this mean that we're going to adopt one of those plans? No. We needed an idea about what could happen before we begin the conversation and the process of developing what will happen. This plan, these plans, give us framework to have this discussion. There are some amazing opportunities in the proposed plans, and our job now is to see what we can do, how we would do it, and when it might happen. Somewhere along the line between where we are now and the draft plan might be the solution for our students. But again, at this point, no decisions have been made, and any speculation about what might happen under the draft plan is really premature. One of the most asked questions in all of this is what happens to Wyndham? So, we reached out to our attorney and consulted with them, and our articles say that after a year passes, that the decision to accept or not accept Wyndham into this, into the West River District is left to the member towns. And also, so, we would need to warn a special meeting probably in November around the same time as the general, as the other elections, to get the most participation for the member and non-member towns. That's Article 18, I think it was? So, that's, that's where Wyndham stands in this whole thing. You know, in terms of us as a board making a decision, the articles prevent that, and it'll, it'll return to you, the voters. So, I'm gonna ask each board member to spend a couple of minutes to speak to the general tone of the feedback that they've heard, as well as share their personal feedback and reaction. So, I'll go first. I think I covered most of it, and most of what I've heard in the beginning here, but I've also heard a lot of positive comments about the opportunities and the expansion of things like triple E, and, you know, the availability of more opportunities for, for the different students. But realistically, right now, we have 75 days until we have to start a budget process for our new district. There's not enough time to answer all the questions necessary to implement one of those draft plans, even if we were to decide to do that right now. I, personally, I think we need to figure out how we run what we have for the next year or so, and, but also really try and figure out a way to add elementary choice for fall of 2019, and develop, and then also work to develop a timeline for the discussions with our community to see where we're gonna end up in this journey. Maybe have a structural plan in place by next May after our annual meeting. We also really need to, and we'll work on this again tonight and at our retreat, developing a central repository for questions, answers, minutes, video presentations, and information for this new district. Because making this information readily available and easily accessible really needs to be a priority goal of our board, in my opinion. Because there's way too much information out there that's not from us and not necessarily true. Okay, so, who wants to go next and talk about what they've heard in the last three weeks, and what they think?
I will. I'm not afraid. Well, from what I've heard back from members of Brookline and Townsend, or, Newfane, no, and Townsend, actually, so, was really not good. A lot of our schools work locally with the PTOs, and have a parent have their kids in four different schools or three different schools, just seems like a nightmare, and which PTO do you volunteer for, and is it for three-year term, and then move on to another school? Or do you follow through, that kind of stuff? Also, one big question was asked of me was, whatever happened to Jamaica and Townsend combining? And that was one of the things that I thought would make it more of a level playing field, to have Townsend students either go to Jamaica 1 through 5, and, or if they're on this far, this side of town, go to Newbrook. And put the pre-K, all the pre-K centralized in one building, 6th graders go up to Leland and Gray, and to have the supervisory union office occupy the rest of the space in the Townsend Elementary. Which wouldn't be a first, because, as we know, the SU office used to be above Timson Hill years back. So, it is possible, that would give us even more cost savings there. You might have kids in two different towns, but more than likely, not three. And that seemed to calm some people and their fears. But, I've also heard, they, they do like the idea of the 6th graders going up to the high school, middle school, and they do like the idea of more attention on, and focus on special ed. And that's the feedback that I got, and a lot of job insecurity.
You want to go down the line? Sure, go for it. All right, so, I've heard from a fair amount of people, heard a lot of those same concerns of having, you know, kids in three or four different schools for families. Definitely had one person say, well, we have to do something, and this is something. I also want to reiterate what Joe said, because the district staff did do exactly what we told them to do, which was come up with a starting point for conversation. I guess for me, I'm wondering where the savings come from? Devil's in the details. And, you know, I started looking into it, and I, for myself personally, I found there's a lot of promises of savings in, like Maine or other places where this has happened that don't always materialize. So, before we go down a road like this, I'd wanna be real sure and do our due diligence, make sure that, you know, anything we do is actually gonna pan out the way we all hoped and expected will. That's my two cents.
So, my personal view is that a plan like has been proposed would really limit community involvement, and that community involvement is what's gonna make a school not just okay, but really, really good. And also, I want to make sure that whatever plan we do come up with, I feel like the plan that was proposed really limits the ability for younger students to have older student role models, and I think that that also is going to negatively affect interpersonal skills and the ability of our students to actually get along with the world. So, all of that being said, a lot of, I have heard a lot of concerns, obviously, from the community, and other things that I wanted to bring up that were brought up to me were concerns about the distance of having to travel, especially for pre-K, because the, statistically speaking, the families that will benefit probably the most from a publicly-funded pre-K program are those families that aren't able to spend 45 minutes in the car and the gas money to do it twice a day to get their kid to pre-K. And if we're going to design a system for, a pre-K system particularly, it needs to be accessible, and just saying that we have it doesn't necessarily make it accessible. Other points that I want to bring up would be that all of the additional transitions seem to have lots of undue trauma for students. I have several people talk about if the 6th graders were to move up, that could potentially be really great, as long as there's a very clear distinction between middle school and high school that maybe needs to be bigger than what we have right now. And I also heard from a lot of Newbrook families in particular, that were concerned about different approaches to education that are happening at different schools right now, and how, how do those different priorities get equalized and who loses? Because what's a priority at one school isn't necessarily exactly the same priority at another school, and is that okay or not, I guess, is what we need to decide. So, those were my major concerns.
Okay, I'm gonna start with things that I've heard. A lot of people in Jamaica clearly are not happy about this. A lot believe that either option, either the one or the two option inevitably has Jamaica eventually closing, actually, what you were just speaking to, with people not being able to transport their children and other such things. Obviously, there's concerns with the busing, and how much time students will be spent, have their time spent on the buses. I also heard comments about the younger students learning from the older students and that no longer being an option, and then as well as having to get your kids around to multiple schools. Those are the concerns that I've been hearing. I personally am in favor of this plan, for a lot of reasons. I think it would just be great, just for all the things that we discussed at the last meeting, with all this teachers being able to collaborate. I, for one, my daughter has only one other girl in her class, and those types of things are really concerning for me. So, to have all the grade levels together is something that I'm definitely in support of, and I actually happen to live right next door to Jamaica school, so I would actually be losing out. So, yeah. So, feel free to email me with any questions about me being in favor of this plan.
I heard a lot of the same concerns. I think the biggest ones that I've heard are transportation and the mentoring. You know, I think it's really important that not only the younger students get, to be mentored by the older students, or that, that the older students get to mentor the younger students, and vice versa. It's just something that it is, to me, it's very important as a second grader to be able to look up and see what is the 6th grade doing, what's coming, what are the 3rd graders doing, what's coming next year, what's coming in two years, what's coming in three years? You know, where am I going, what are, what are my expectations? And learning the teaching staff as well, knowing, okay, I'm gonna get that teacher next year, and I know, I understand what her expectations are. As well as having, one thing that hasn't been mentioned specifically, but has as far as, you know, transportation, having children, siblings in separate schools, is exactly that. Having siblings in separate schools, all of their school career, elementary anyway, is difficult. You know, you want to be able to go to, as a younger sibling, you want to be able to go to your older sibling for information, comfort, support, whatever it may be, and not having that, I think would be really difficult. The mentoring, like I said, the mentoring is huge, and as Mike mentioned, I'm very interested to see where the savings are. You know, I don't need to see exactly every penny, but I think it's very important that we, as a group, sit down and look at, and really spell out, where is this money going, what's happening to it? You know, how will budgeting per school work? You know, if we're all one big budget, how will, you know, when Jamaica wants to order supplies, who are they going to? How is that all happening? Is it one big pool? What's going on with that? I mean, that, that obviously is a logistic that will be shaken out at some point, but it's something that wasn't necessarily touched on. I think that's mostly it. The big things that I heard were, where did school choice go? What's going, mentoring is a real issue, as well as transportation.
I've heard a lot of exactly what has been said, with the exception to happy about the 6th grade being in the high school. I have some very concerned parents of students who think that that's a big jump. I also have some notes here from other people in the community in addition to what has been previously said, and most of it is how will we address this aspect? On the last page of the plan, it says that this draft plan is designed to respect the work of the study committee and deliver upon the vision and goals of the West River Education District. In regards to respecting the study committee, there was a letter that went out previous to our vote on town meeting day that said, voting yes on the consolidation question means, and this is what our towns were told, most of them are okay, but number two, states' day-to-day operation of our schools will not change. They will continue to provide a high-quality education for our students. Number three states, students will continue to go to their town's elementary school and then to Leland and Gray. Number four states, that all of our children will be eligible to participate in elementary school choice program, and the existing statewide 9 to 12 public high school stills, school choice program. And number five states, all five schools will have a school-based advisory committee that will provide feedback to the new larger board on issues and concerns that are important to their school and town. The membership of these committees is expected to include parents, townspeople, the principal, a member from the board of that town, and others concerned in the operation of that school. And that was put in there to provide a, a school culture for each school. So, a lot of people that have addressed issues to me want to know how we are going to, um, how are we going to work through those things that were told to the towns would be done with a plan like this?
Okay, so, the things I've heard are very similar to what we've been hearing here. I'll just define a few specifics. The sibling issue is certainly rising to the surface for a lot of folks, understandably so. Just the fact that this is a significant change in itself is really worrisome for a lot of parents and community members. From my own perspective, I realize that we've already made a big change by moving from multiple schools with separate boards to one unified board, and it's going to be really, really important for us to make sure that we're hearing from our communities, and most of all, from the parents of students who will be attending, or are attending, or will be attending these schools. So, I think it's gonna be really incumbent upon us in the either short or longer period of time that we have, when we are moving forward with whatever the final decision is around what we're gonna be structured like, that we get feedback from parents, and we have found that to be a very challenging issue in the past. Parents are extremely busy with work and parenting. So, I think our board needs to work really hard to find a way to reach out to parents and see, because there are challenges in the sizes of our schools, which they've already been mentioning, so.
First, I would like to thank the administration for putting the proposal together as the board asked for, and I'm glad that we're at a point where we can have this discussion. This is the discussion that we've been needing to have for a long time. Over the last three weeks, I haven't had a lot of comments, but I've had some up and out of the area. I've had some comments in both directions, some that are in favor, some that are not in favor for the reasons that we've, we've heard. I think the piece that's most important for me is to realize that currently, we don't have equity in our schools. We have three elementary schools that are very different. We have three educational experiences for our elementary school students that are very different. In Jamaica, we've already heard about the, the social environment where you may only have a, a single friend in your grade because you are the only female student. You may have the same teacher for four consecutive years, because that is the only thing that's available. That's not the same educational opportunity that's being offered in Newfane. And I'm sure as, you know, parents look at this proposal, they're gonna look through the lens of their own students and their own, um, school system. But keep in mind, as you look from a Newfane perspective, and what you have in Newfane is very different than the way I'm looking from the Jamaica perspective, which is different than somebody else in Townsend. What I like most about this proposal is it levels the playing field and, and provides a education, or at least the promise of a equal and equitable education for all of our students across the district. So, at this point, I look forward to hearing more comments, and look forward to working out the details of how we're gonna put this district together so that all students can be served, not just those in one district or another.
So, I was tasked with gathering everybody's questions, and I have to tell you, what an engaged community. Amazing. Not just the community, every, you know, teachers, administrators, board members. It was absolutely fascinating to, to read all of the questions, thoughtful questions, and everything that the folks were interested in hearing about this. And I would concur with a lot of folks up here, that I think the administration did an amazing job in pulling all of this together, getting us in a direction, and obviously, engaging the community. So, as Bill is pulling this up, so I was able to pull together just a couple PowerPoint pages of kind of what the common themes were, and he'll pull that up, but this is a living, breathing document. I will continue to be looking at questions that come up. At some point, I can probably maybe put a, a ranking to some of them. Oh, I've heard that one 10 times, I've heard that one five times, just to kind of show the importance of it. But as Trish and I were talking about, the, the biggest underlying theme of this whole thing is, this is change, and how everybody adapts to change is, is different. But our job is to present you with facts, and give you the most information we possibly can, so that you're informed and we can all go in the right direction. So, here are kind of the main, what's it? Next slide.
Sorry.
All right, ready? All right. That's right. So, again, if you don't see your question exactly up here, feel, feel free to send it again, or let me know, but these are just basic themes. So, different combinations of grade levels, locations, mergers. That was a, one of the main questions. Online form for Q and A. This one, we've already kind of talked about to, to some degree. Other options on the table. Yes, obviously, again, we, this, what we have presented to us was a starting point, more work to be done. Does this impede school choice? I know that was a, if I had to rank, this was probably top one or two question. How will transportation be handled, travel times, weather? That was the number one question. Is this the best solution for our children? What is the research surrounding this? And I know that there was a lot of research Jen looked at, so I'm sure that that will be presented to us, exactly where the school district was, how they were before, after, so we'll get, dive deeper into that, I'm sure. Implications to social and emotional well-being of children? What are the studies surrounding this? Will we have a loss of sense of community? What are the job implications, and how will that work? In terms of teachers licensing, elementary, middle school, school closing implications? Why Jamaica? How would that work? How are individual school programs offerings affected? What are the additional opportunities? For example, STEAM? And this has already been talked about, but loss of interaction between older and younger students and siblings? What is the impact of higher number of transitions? Again, we talked about that. Families with children in different schools? How does Wyndham factor in? Will there be a principal in each building? Are there any benefits of multi-grade classrooms? In other words, the current configuration that we have? Any consideration of start times at high school? I know that Jen could probably speak to some studies of, of that. What does do nothing look like? What's the breakdown of financial implications? What are the taxpayer costs? Implications for support staff? What are the impacts to high school? What is the reconfiguration to accommodate 6th graders? What are the projected enrollments? And of course, most important to me, how will sports teams be organized? So, again, those are the, kind of the major themes of the questions. Obviously, a lot for the administration and the board members to chew on, and I would just say, continue to send this information to us, these questions, these comments. The only way we're gonna get there is together, so, keep it up. The only way we're going to get there is together, so keep it up, keep it coming.
Thanks, Al. Al's exactly right. That's why we have the note cards, that's why we have the online forum. And I think one of the things we, as a board, need to talk about is, you know, expanding the opportunity to get that information to everyone and to receive feedback, you know, not necessarily at a meeting online, however we want to do it. So, you know, at this point, we're really discussing sort of where we are right now and how we move forward after seeing those draft plans. I think, you know, we've all had our opportunity to speak to what we think and sort of, I don't know. I mean, at this point, board, you know, where do we go from here? How do we move on? I think, you know, we need to gather, the information that we gather, you know, tonight and going forward, we have a retreat in a week, and it's a full day. You know, we're going to probably do a lot of discussing of timeline and how things move forward and what it looks like and what the engagement piece comes out of that. And, you know, publish that and then, you know, continue this dialogue going on. You have an idea?
Let's take questions?
Yeah, let's take it out to you folks. We have probably 100 or so folks here. All came out on a steamy, hot night. I'm sure you have some questions. How about we hand the mic around?
Beth Cutts from Townsend. I was just wondering what did happen to school choice? Why isn't that one of your, in one of your two plans? And the second question is, when this takes effect, how many of you on the board will have kids in the elementary school?
Recapture this?
My name is Catherine Scott, and I'm from the elephant in the room, Wyndham. I have two questions that I don't expect answers to and one comment. Multiple, one teacher year after year, being in the same grade even though you're in a different grade. Is it an opportunity or isn't it an opportunity? I'm not sure that that's as easily defined as you might think. That might very well be in the experience of the children involved and the teachers that they work with. So it's not quite as simple as a one-size-fits-all, that shouldn't be or that should be. Secondly, what constitutes an equal and equitable education? Does an equal and equitable education look like Cluddbrook, suburban New Jersey, Wyndham Elementary? There is no one-size-fits-all. The last thing I would like to say is, when the Act 46 issue came to be and Wyndham expressed its concerns based on its geographic location and its size about school closure, we were told that wasn't on the table. No school closure was on the table. That was not an issue, therefore it could not be discussed. And here we are. When we addressed our concerns about transportation, our young ones down Wyndham Hill Road, we were told, again, that requires closure. School closure is not on the table, therefore it is not a germane discussion. Here we are. After being, after our own rejection of the unified board by a vote in our town, we are now caught between the state's insistence that we should merge and a plan formulated by this board which doesn't include us, which means if it goes through, we are closed. Let's face it. If the state says we go in the merger and you guys go with the plan proposed, we don't exist anymore. And quite frankly, we don't like that very much. It seems to me, we are putting all the problems of declining population and increasing cost on the backs of the children. Not on the backs of the state and how it funds education, but on the backs of the children. And I would ask you to reconsider that, please.
Yes?
Since Wyndham is not a member of the entire district, just the high school... Since Wyndham is not a member of the entire district by their own vote and just the high school, I would suggest that no person from Wyndham be able to speak to anything that involves the elementary schools. I do not think they have that right.
Thank you.
Sure. Hi, Chris Jurs, Townsend. So I was at the last meeting and I thought this meeting was going to answer some of our questions. So I'm just wondering, is that actually going to happen today or are you just gathering more questions?
Mostly gathering more questions. In order to really answer questions, we would have to have a better idea of what we're going to do. I mean, if we take, if we say we're going with Plan A, then we can answer questions if Plan A is what the end is. But if we're going to run all the schools, then the answers are much different. I personally would like to see us run everything and have choice. Well, if we're going to have choice, the answers are going to be a little bit different because we're going to have to deal with the transportation issue and we're going to have to have a cutoff and then staff appropriately for choice because if a bunch of kids move from one town to another, obviously, we have to staff appropriately. So a lot of the questions, it kind of, until we know where we're going, they're difficult to answer. I mean, we can try and answer something.
And I understand that. So how will we know when that's going to happen? Because I came here thinking that there was going to be discussion around these questions to better inform you on which choice or which direction to go. And if you're just generating more questions, then I don't know when I can, or when we can tell you our thoughts on the plan or whatever you're going with. So just something to think about, because I think that's why many of us are here, is to hear some answers.
We don't know what plan, I mean, those are, that's just a proposal, draft plan. What we really need to do at this point is formulate the real plan.
So when is that going to happen?
I think it's going to take months of discussion about, you know, what? Something in that plan must, must be good, you know? What's good in that plan? What's bad in that plan? What do we, you know, what do we add? What do we subtract? How do we take some of the good ideas and get rid of the bad ideas and how do we address the concerns?
So you asking us as well to come up today and say some of our thoughts about what might be an alternative? I'm just wondering what clarification is.
Sure, I'd love to hear all the ideas. I want to hear from parents and people and everybody, you know, I want to hear, this is, my kids are out of the elementary school system and out of the high school system. This doesn't affect me. I'm doing this because I care about the future of education of, you know, kids that aren't mine. This isn't just, you know, my kids. So I want to hear it all. Tell me.
Well, I'll let others speak first and then I'll come back up. But I just wanted to be sure that that's what's...
Please share your feedback.
I will.
Molly Hallows, New Fane. So my biggest concern is related to data that I've looked at about this. And I'm more concerned about the academic achievement and all of the aspects of that affects the kids and their development. And everything that I found, it showed that high school dropout rates skyrocket, that the transitions really poorly affect the kids when they have to move, transition so often. And I looked at a bunch of different studies. I would totally be open to it if all of the data wasn't so negative when it happened before. That's my concern. I'm not sure where the positive data is because I can't find it.
If you could share that data with us, just email it to, you know, go on the comment forum, email us the links, let us know.
Yeah, absolutely.
We would definitely be interested in that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Terry Davidson-Burger, Townsend. I was just hoping that somebody could answer Beth's question about the article that the towns voted on regarding school choice. And since that's no longer an option, I'd love a response to Beth's question. Thank you.
Until we decide what plan we're going with, choice isn't no longer an option. That was just one draft option that could happen. Under that... We wanted to, we wanted to give that opportunity to people, but that didn't, I don't think that precluded this plan where, where that wasn't the way we were going to educate children anymore. But again, this plan isn't, this isn't a decision. It's just, hey, there are some really, there are some real advantages for our students by doing these things, putting them all in one place and having a larger social group and having the, you know, I don't want to go through, but the, there was a ton of research and bullet point after bullet point about, you know, putting the grades together and grouping it by the common core and being able to provide more special education because you have all the kids in that age group in one place. Those advantages come from having everybody in one place, not from having four different schools with choice. But again, we haven't made any decision about that. So no one has said that choice is off the table. Again, I would like to see us have choice, starting in fall of 2019, running all the schools just as we have them now. And see, and then while we continue the discussion about what this district might look like going forward, we'll have a year where we run every school and see what choice does. So choice is definitely not off the table because there's no decision then made.
But choice can only be done by availability in a building.
Right.
So what we need to first run is a pilot program. No, I know, I'm just saying, what we first need to do is run a pilot program. If you have 40 kids with one teacher, it's not going to work.
Joel Bloming, Jamaica. Could you list the advantages?
Anybody have a copy? They're, they're in the plan, they're in those plans that was presented. I could, I would be happy to get you a copy. I don't want to beat down the list. Yep, it's in the video. I mean, both Stephanie and Jen, Jen, something, you know, did a very good job of highlighting those advantages. And, and actually, some of the challenges. I mean, it was a very fair presentation.
Hi, Patty Dixon from Jamaica. I was on the Lila Negre Board when Act 46 was beginning, when we were doing all the study things. And I participated on the committee. And I was part of the, putting together the Articles of Agreement. And those two options that you have presented are not the spirit, in the spirit of this document. I reread it, it just does not go with this document. The other parts of the plan were amazing, but they come from this. And this document actually has a sentence, a full sentence. Article 15 starts with, "Students in grades K through 12 will be served by the same schools that currently exist. No contingencies, no subject to policies, nothing." That is in the articles. And I thought this was a legal agreement, a legal document. And the letter that we sent out is also, that is, that is the essence of what we all, and when I stood up in front of the Jamaica residents and told them this was all about, that was there. That's not in this. That was not anything that I ever thought I was agreeing to tell Jamaica people would happen. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Matthew Hart from Townsend. First, I've sat on school committees and unions. And I appreciate how much it stakes and it's difficult. And I think change is difficult. I'm also an educational consultant. I work with families of kids who are underserved.
Sure.
And I've worked in special ed schools, schools with at-risk kids, traditional schools. And now I work as a consultant, some with schools, but mainly with families who are underserved. And when I looked at this, the first thing that hit me, our kids on IEPs, 504s, with diagnoses like ASD, anxiety disorder, reactive attachment disorder, these transitions are in complete odds to what they need and what I'm sure their 504s, sorry, IEPs call for or should call for. And I'm afraid that if you move in this direction, because I do this with parents all the time and I seek alternative placements. And having served in a little town, I know how much that can really cost the taxpayers. My town where I was, we had $60,000 for alternative placements. One placement, when I work with families, is between $80,000 and $140,000 a year. If a person gets an independent eval and an educational attorney, I'm afraid you guys are, or, not you guys, sorry, I shouldn't say it that way. But I'm afraid the district is tying its hands. And it's going to cost the taxpayers and it's going to cost the kids a ton.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Webb. I'm from Brookline. Moved into the area several years ago. And when we moved in, we definitely looked at all of the schools and why we picked our area was one of those reasons. And it's a great community that we have. And I don't doubt that every single parent here loves the community that they're in or has an attachment to or an affection for it. The one thing I think Alicia pointed out the most, because I was sitting around today at work thinking, I feel like this was a bait and switch when we made this choice. It really wasn't a choice. I think Act 46 was a mistake. I think that we were in a rock and a hard place. You either choose it or we'll choose it for you. But when we have what's listed out, what Alicia pointed out, we had some promises in there. And the promises were not kept in these draft plans.
Hi, Heidi Rose from Townsend. I don't mean to push this, Joe, but I have just a question for you. I think there's some clarification. I know everybody sitting around, we thought we'd have some answers today. We're not going to, and that's fine. But a little while ago, you said in 75 days, you're going to have to start creating a budget. But when you responded to Chris Jurs' question, you said it's going to take months to get this figured out. I think people in the audience are concerned and want to make sure that they, that something doesn't just happen and no one knows what's going on. I think really structuring a timeline so that people know when you're going to have to make a decision to start basing a budget around it, I think we need to know that. When can we hear some answers? You're going to go to a retreat, there's going to be a lot of discussion about what you want to do. It's a lot of hard decisions. I don't envy you. But for transparency's sake, I think it's really important that you clarify what you foresee, what meetings they should come to, to be kept as informed as possible.
My name's Erin from Brookline. Fairly taking a little bit of time to deal with anything anymore. One of the things that I did when I heard about all of these possible changes, because they're just possibilities, is I recruited my other half to drive me around. And I got out at every single school. I got out in Wyndham, I went to Jamaica, I went to Townsend, and I went to New Brook. And it takes a lot for me to walk, but I walked around each school. I saw people that I knew in every place that I went, in the towns, in the schools. In the towns, in the schools. We are one giant community. And our state government is putting us in a really difficult place. We, as a community, have to work together to find a plan that works. I'm not opposed to all of the ideas that I read about. And I remember when we listened to the principals talk about their schools, and I remember some of them underverged tears, because they loved their schools. We all love our schools, and we all love our communities. And right now, we're one community, and we have to work together to fix this.
Thank you. You are absolutely right. We are one community, and we do have to work together. That's our only alternative. Okay, so clarification, you know, not, not trying to not be transparent at all. We have, you know, again, we, we have to create a budget in about 75, in about 75 days, it'll be budget season, to put, to start putting things together. And we're going to have to make a decision about what we do. I don't think anyone, you know, listening to the individual board members speak and listening to the community, I don't think anyone here would try and implement Plan A or Plan B in 75 days. It's just not possible. We're probably going to have to, you know, we're probably going to have to just continue things as they are and continue the conversation. That, that would be my, my thought. We haven't made that decision yet, but I think that, you know, once we come up with a timeline for, you know, how this is going to work, I foresee the discussions being many, many months. But we still have to run the schools, starting July 1st of 2019, and that budget would have to be developed and voted on in, you know, the end, at the end of the year and by town meeting of 2019. So, you know, those are sort of independent happenings. We're certainly not going to try and make major changes or adopt a new plan before we do a budget, I don't think. Again, I don't want to, I'm speaking based on feedback that I've heard from the board earlier. We haven't had this discussion. But, you know, that, there's not going to be any sort of like secret meeting where we quick, put a plan in, pass a budget, and say, ah, it's done. That's, you know, this is going to be a long conversation, back and forth between the large community that Erin referenced, where we all figure out what we can do to increase opportunities for all our children. You know, we really need to embrace, you know, the mentality of Newfane and Townsend and Jamaica and, you know, the building being the community. The, that has to kind of, those have to expand. You know, your kids are going to get it when they come to 7th grade, even now, they come to Leland and Gray, and all of a sudden, you know, you're cheering for kids that, you know, you used to cheer against the year before because you wanted to beat them, because they were kicking you all over the soccer field. But now, you're glad that they're playing with them, because those are really good athletes. So, that, that spirit just has to come a little bit sooner. And if it can, we have an opportunity to do a lot for our children, based on the plans that we were presenting. More questions, comments? Did I answer your question? You are.
Anne Brower de Vosk, Jamaica. My grandchildren are in the Jamaica school. I'm a teacher, retired teacher, retired principal, been a lot of years in education. I love having local school, I love that they can ride their bikes to school, but there's a number problem. What I'd like to know is what per, across the district, what the number of students are in an average four-year pre-K kindergarten, first grade, because that might help with the decisions. There's one girl in 3rd grade next year, 2 and 4, 1 and 5. School social, it's, that's one of the most important parts. It's academic, it's emotional, it's all of these different things. It's, it's, you know, gym and playtime. And I think that we're doing the children a disservice with the number factor. And I think if we had an idea of how many students overall we have in the district per grade, it might help all of us have some better thoughts as to what to do. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll, we'll get those numbers, and we'll post them on our central repository.
Thank you.
Good evening. Rich Burbridge, South Newfane, so way up in the district. My question is, some of you have mentioned the sense of community within the schools, and involvement within the PTOs. And if parents have kids in multiple schools, how do they balance, you know, activities at one school and another? Our schools are only as good as parent involvement. Period, hands down. And we've got some excellent parents here tonight, who care about their kids. And they're here to express their ideas, to care about their kids, and the direction of education in Wind, in the district. So I'm asking, have you talked to PTOs and PTA's in the different schools, and seen what are their ideas? Because, take New Brook for an example. Every year, they have kids go to Montreal. And every year, they fundraise by collecting cans. Now, if the parents who, kids are always at New Brook, if their kids are now going to Townsend, are they still going to donate those cans? What kind of impact is that going to have on the New Brook's trip? You know? So, like, just because the numbers work, and we're going to save some money as a district, that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to give all the kids an equitable and excellent education. Thank you. Thank you.
I think most of my concerns were brought up, thank you, and we spoke just about all of them. But one thing that I haven't heard you mention, a lot of us commute for work. I commute to Brattleboro, and I'm a parent that we're looking at three children in three different schools. I would not be able to send my pre-K child to Jamaica, living in Windham, so it would be unmanageable for me. And, yeah, I would make the choice to probably go to Tinsel Hill, if Tinsel Hill survived. But it's, parent involvement is extremely important for our family, and we did choose to live where we live, because we love New Brook so much. We love our teachers, we love our principal. And, yeah, I simply would not be able to participate in that pre-K program, living in Windham, so, thank you.
Lynn Noble, Old Brookline. I'd just like to follow up on that issue about pre-K. I would want to make sure in the pre-K programs under the new plan, that vacation time, holiday time is provided for these kids? I'm not sure it would be. Also, pre-work, post-work time, which is now provided by two very solid daycare programs we have. We want what's good about those programs incorporated in the new plan. Wouldn't want any holes for those pre-K kids and parents.
Thank you.
I'm a French teacher, and had to go to school, study education. And one of the things that we learned was that it's a really bad idea to take kids from 6th grade, even 7th and 8th grade. They say it's not great to take them away from their elementary school, where they know all the adults, just as they're going into puberty, the hormones start raging, all kinds of bad things can happen when you get taken away from your community, and you get sent to the high school with our older kids. You're suddenly exposed to a lot of stuff that your parents would really rather you not be exposed to. So, just one thing to think about. I'm also hearing, you know, my kids all went through Newfane, Leland and Gray, the whole shebang, and they had a great experience. I can't imagine what you're asking these people to deal with, driving their kids to, you know, from Newfane to Jamaica. I would just homeschool my kids, forget about it. I'm sorry, I know you put a lot of time into this plan, and, you know, but it's just that idea of the transportation. Somebody else said that they couldn't do it, but they're working, it's just crazy. Patty, what she brought up, sounds like maybe lawsuits. I don't know, is this, is this even legal, what you're talking about doing? And I know, it's just a proposal, but, you know, something to think about. I was on the school board for many years, and it's always a concern, right? What was my other thought? Yeah, I mean, maybe the cost, like, you know, you're asking people to give up a lot, and how much are you going to save? I mean, you're still going to have all these different buildings, you're still going to need a lot of staff people. Where are the savings? And finally, I guess I'm also hearing that, it seems like this is a big problem for Jamaica. It sounds like New Brook, New Brook is doing great. I didn't hear anything about Townsend having a low population. Jamaica has a low population. Vermont has a problem with having families, and having work for those families. And we want families here, we want kids, kids are great. How do you get them to come? The economics of this place is really hard. And I'm sorry, you know, it's, it's really too bad for Jamaica, and I'm really sorry you're in this situation. What's, is there another alternative? I mean, there was talk about merging with Townsend. Is that not a possibility? That's at least, you guys are closer together? I don't see how, you know, unsettling New Brook can solve this problem. Thanks, talked too much, but thanks.
Thank you.
Tom Tolbert, from Jamaica. I was on the school board a few years back, and we talked a lot about, and I'm not hearing it in this plan, about building a new school with, and I know, Al, you were in that conversation, is building a new school that's more efficient, that's built out in green, that houses both the Townsend and the Jamaica kids, somewhere in between the corridor, on Route 30 corridor. And I'm curious why we're not looking at something like that, where the school's going to get a lot more economy of scale, it's going to be a lot more efficient, and combine the students, so you're not having one, one girl in 4th grade, you're going to, you have to still have the people from both towns, but you're going to be in a new building. So, more towns are affected, but everyone's still going to end up better. And I think the kids' education will be better if we did something like that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alekhan, I'm from Townsend. I would like just some more thought into 6th graders going to Leland and Gray. I don't know how much preparation they have, how much room, and that would, what that would also mean for the school. I'm friends with some of the teachers that are there in junior high, and they're doing a great job, but they're not necessarily prepared for this. I'm also, I went, I was educated in the school systems up through junior high, and I'm actually really looking forward to having Chris Jurz and having my kids in 6th grade with the project she does. I know she does an amazing job prepping kids for junior high and taking these kids on amazing trips. And so, I think that there's something to be said for kids kind of getting to that element, in the pinnacle of elementary school, and having celebratory kind of stuff, and having it be a big deal, and then going, so that's one piece. And then I don't know how prepared Leland and Gray, you know, the middle school is. I was also there as a 12-year-old. I know it's changed since, but there is a huge difference between 12-year-olds and 18-year-olds. And also, we're, we're changing the age to 11-year-olds. I have just concerns about that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Don't be shy.
I'm Elizabeth Erickson, and I'm a parent of three kids at New Brook Elementary. And, well, I think this plan has some benefits of combining grade levels for ability, class, class arrangements, and skill blocks, and specialized resources. I think that those academic benefits are, do not compare to the community, I think the community that we have at New Brook, that we've created far outweighs the academic benefits. I worry about some of the things that we've created, and what will happen to the programs that we've supported as community, the Part of the School Program, and the Four Winds Program, which I'm a coordinator of. And I, this past year, Townsend decided not to continue the program. And so, I wonder how that would affect combining, you know, you know, my, about the New Brook students that would be getting Four Winds, pre-K to second, would that be supported at Townsend in the future? So, I just think that, you know, we've worked really hard, and as a community, to, and we have a certain, you know, levels of support, but I'm wondering what's going to happen to that. And having parents divided up between different towns, how they're going to be able to continue that support of all the schools.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joyce Van Hamlen. And one of the biggest concerns that I have about this change is about how we nurture children, how we nurture families. As a school teacher, it's, it's all about building relationships. And like, for example, at, at New Brook, we have a wonderful laughter program. I get to know the 1st and 2nd graders, 3rd and 4th graders, so by the time they come to 6th grade, I've already developed a relationship with them, and with their parents. And I'm really, really concerned about how I will be able, as wherever I am going to be teaching, I don't know where, but, how can somebody develop a relationship with somebody that lives 13 miles up the valley? And you might only see them maybe when there's a program. That's a big concern I have, about how we're going to be able to nurture the families and develop a relationship with them if we hardly ever see them. Because it'll be very difficult if they're not in and out of the school as much as they are with the local community schools.
Thank you.
Greg Jolly, from Jamaica. I was on the school board in Jamaica back in 98, 2000, when the Brigham decision came down and Act 66 was brought in. Jamaica was found to be a gold tab. Within the first year of Act 66 going into existence, Jamaica was sending over $300,000 more than our school budget had been before to the state. Some of which went to a parking garage in Burlington. The point of the Brigham's decision was educational equity. Then we went through Act 68, and now we're going through Act 46, and whatever act comes next. And what seems to happen is, we don't get equity, we get our schools shut down. Also, speaking to Patty Dixon's concern and others that I've heard around what was presented at town meeting, as a town meeting moderator, I find it very difficult to have articles brought before a body which is supposed to vote on something that in the long run has no voice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that not a possibility to combine Townsend and Jamaica, Jamaica School? I know when I first moved here, that's what was being talked about, and that would kind of alleviate, having to send children on buses, like the one lady from Williamsville, all the way to Jamaica for pre-K, which she said she can't do anyway. But is that an option, combining, is either building big enough to house both elementary
The plan, I think, was to get rid of, was to close both elementary schools and build a new elementary school somewhere in between. I don't know if either building is big enough to house them. I think, I have heard Townsend is with some additions and modifications, but any of, all of these plans are possible. I mean, we're, you know, we-
I mean, we're, you know, we gave a fairly wide set of parameters, goals, vision, and the idea that the study committee said that a combined structure would be more able to address opportunities for children, as we knew these times were coming. So we, with sort of pie in the sky, we said, hey, guys, tell us what this could look like. I mean, what, and took all the barriers out, think outside of the box, you know, and wow, if we put all the kids in the same place and moved them around and did all of this, shocking changes, huge changes, these things would be possible. That's sort of the extreme. And then we have the current model. And again, somewhere in that, somewhere in there, you know, like building the new school, or putting the two kids together, or doing whatever, somewhere in there is what is the right decision after a bunch of conversation, is the right decision for our community. And we're just, we just wanna have that conversation at this point.
Right.
Nobody's made any decisions.
At the last meeting, that, I didn't see as being one of the options. So there, so you're saying there are other options, other than the options we saw at the last meeting? So there's other things that are possible?
Oh, the options are endless, literally endless.
Are they gonna be presented? When will those be presented? Because I thought, too, coming tonight, we were gonna get some answers. I was, I didn't know. It was just more questions.
Rather than present option after option after option, because each, to flesh out each option and do the work to determine the benefits and the challenges and the costs and the, you know, to project that out, to even start talking about it, each one of those takes an incredible amount of time and energy from the administration and work. So rather than do that again and again and again, we have this one plan that, you know, hey, it could look like this. And now we can discuss what, you know, yes, what you talked about can certainly happen, and lots of other things can happen. And at some point in this, we probably, we hopefully will come to a consensus with the greater community that, yep, these are some changes, but these changes are worth the change, these changes are worth the fact that it's a little scary, because we're gonna get this and this and this. And, you know, other, other things that were proposed, it's like, nope, that's not gonna work for us, we can't support it, it's just too, it's too much. But all we, all we really did was start the conversation. So yes, there's certainly other ones, but I don't think what you'll see is, you know, 20 more plans put together and presented as, how about this plan? It'll be more a fluid discussion where we say, okay, that should go in the plan, okay, that's out of the plan. Okay, well, now that we've talked about it, these are the things that should go in the plan, and these are the things that are out of the plan, and this is how it's ultimately gonna work. Make sense?
Sure.
I guess I'm just thinking, it sounds like, you know, with the work you guys did, a lot of work I'm sure went into it, came out with a plan that, that is, you know, kind of pie in the sky, right? So the thing I keep hearing from a lot of people is that there were some agreements ahead of time with what people thought the original plan would look like, with the school choice and different things that went to the voters. So I'm just wondering, why wouldn't you have started with those ground rules given to the administration? Your first plan would have been something that met all those wickets, right? Then you would come and give that to Townsend, hey, this is what you guys said we gotta hold ourselves to. This is our plan. What's the positives and negatives of that? Maybe there's not that many, so maybe people see there's not savings, there's not increased education opportunities, so then people are willing to give some of those things up to move in that direction. But I, what I keep hearing instead is people thought they were gonna start with certain ground rules. They had a lot of work put into something that's way out there, and now you're trying to bring everybody back and get to some common ground, and you're so far off. It's, it's like ordering pizza. I always say a work. If you're ordering pizza for more than five people, you're either getting everything or cheese, right? Because you can't do it. And now we got all the people, everybody wants the best thing, including you guys. But I think where you're starting from makes it real difficult. I would suggest that you look at those things that everybody agreed to, start there. There might not be many changes, but they're, challenge the administration, come up with something that's gonna benefit the kids, benefit our finances, but stick to those. Present that, and then go from there. Because I think you're at least starting with everybody on board. In this way, I think you're starting with people not feeling comfortable of where we are starting from. Thank you.
I certainly wanna keep hearing from everybody, but I'd like to make a quick suggestion to the board. There's a lot of really passionate people here, and I think it's a great opportunity before anybody else leaves, I know it's getting late and some people are leaving, to possibly have some resources built. If the board would like, I think it would be a great suggestion for anyone interested in being on a school advisory committee that would provide feedback to the new larger board, that would be parents, townspeople, principals, one of our number five target. Please, could you put your contact information in the box with your questions? I think I, I would like to see that. I don't know if the board would like that or not.
Yes. I like that idea.
I moved, that's me, suggest to the public.
I don't think we need a motion for that. Okay, anything else? Anybody else? Is this the last one?
I hope so.
Well, I'm just trying to get the people behind you to...
What's your proposal for this year's budget, if you keep rolling this thing into 2019? And just to, off the cuff, because there are a lot of people that are saying they'd like to have their kids in their individual towns, has there been any thought to pulling the seventh and eighth graders back into their individual towns, maybe put the supervisor union into Leland and Gray? And then if we do obtain greater population in our individual towns, we can deal with that overage by kicking the supervisor union out. Thank you.
Hi, Bill.
It was good luck.
It was a good luck. All right, anyone else?
At what meeting are you actually gonna answer a question? Because that's the one I really want. Not where... I know, I know, I know, to make your question, but I just assume it's essentially called me, both of them have any questions, we got some questions.
But, okay, so give me an example of a question you'd like answered.
What are you gonna do about the school choice option?
I think we already explained that.
Explain it again.
Okay.
Why, I mean, that is, to me, that's how you solve this whole thing.
Because, okay, look, we asked for one specific, we asked for a plan of what something might look like based on the combined governance, the combined governance, and the mission and the vision. And we said, don't pay attention to anything else that exists. And we gave him a target price of the state average, and he said, that's, that's over $2 million, and that's really shocking, and that would involve deep, deep cuts that we don't even wanna study right now.
That's New Brook's whole budget.
What?
That's the whole budget for New Brook Elementary.
Yeah, that's the whole budget for an elementary school. You know, so, and we, and we asked for this, what, what could it look like? And the results that came back are, it could look like this. And there are reasons why the changes that were in that proposed plan give us advantages. That was just one proposal. That's not the only propos, I'm sorry?
Is that the only question we got? I mean, I know everyone has questions, but it was, I mean...
Can you speak into the mic?
Well, I, I gave, the example is like, okay, what does it do to staffing? The answer, the answer to that question is, what's, what are we running?
Come to the mic.
Come to the mic.
You wanna hear it?
Yeah, I understand that, I understand that you thought you were coming for answers, and...
But we didn't get it, really.
I apologize. We somehow, maybe, maybe I miscommunicated. There, the answers to the questions that are being asked, there's no way that we can answer those questions in a month. This is a much longer conversation than a month. There's, unless, unless the board becomes a dictator and says, this is what will happen, this is how it's gonna be, and here are the answers to all your questions, no feedback, no changes, no suggestions, we can answer the questions. But without that, it's a, it's a dialogue. These are the questions, okay, well, if we do this, these are the answers, if we do this, these are the answers.
But you didn't really answer any questions.
But really, the questions get to what we're gonna ultimately do.
No. You didn't really answer any questions.
We don't really know what we're doing yet.
Well, like...
We don't know what the district is gonna look like. We don't have a plan. Once we have, even, like, this is the plan that we, if we get to a plan that the board says, this is the plan that the board really supports, we can probably answer every question. But right now, we don't have a plan.
But you understand, people thought tonight they were coming to get their answers.
And, and I apologize, but that was, that cannot, that's not the case. We don't have those answers.
Clearly.
And we probably won't have those answers until we have a much better idea of what the district will look like moving forward.
So what is, the next meeting that you invite the public to, what will it be?
The public is invited to every meeting.
Invited to every meeting, I know.
And the public should come to every meeting.
Right. I was on the school board, I know, nobody comes, I know.
Right, and this, you should come to every meeting for the next 12 months and help us figure out where we're going.
Okay.
That's what we need.
Right.
Hey, Joe, could, for the next, could the next meeting be, you guys come back with something that's totally different than this? After all the feedback, you guys know the main questions, and you keep hearing the same ones asked, so why can't the next meeting, we come back with something that's more starting there? You know what I mean? And then you can look at the two and kinda, because you wanna, you're gonna end up in the middle somewhere, right? But it just seems like, it seems like the community is so far off from what the administration put out. That's, that's my gut.
Yeah.
So I, I think if you start off with something easier to work with, it's my gut going. It might be easier.
Yep, thank you.
Thinking what might help is if we look at this the way we did with our study committees and formulate a communication mechanism, and where people can go to find information on a website or something like that, that's one place where all of these people and anybody else, and, you know, that kind of idea. I think that's what people are really looking for, is, is a place to go to look and see what's going on.
Leanne Elson, Brookline. I've been following this a little bit. I have a son that's going to be starting kindergarten in 2019. I've been trying to evaluate the options and figure out what's gonna be best for our family as far as when he's going to school. And I know this point has sort of been hammered a little bit, but at what point are we gonna know a direction that the board is going in as far as what, you know, are we gonna be doing a proposal similar to this? Are we gonna be doing status quo for 2019? It's kinda hard to plan, and I know this is the same for you, when we don't have a direction. What is the direction that we're gonna go in, and when will we have an idea as to when that's going to be?
I would say we'll have a timeline for at least how things are gonna progress after our retreat, at the next meeting. You know, we'll be hashing it out at the retreat, and we'll have it at the next meeting, where it's like, here's how we envision things working. We may or may not have a proposal for what, what the short term looks like at that point, but we may. You know, I hate to speak for the whole board, but I mean, I would like to do that, I just, you know, we'll have a timeline at the next meeting.
Joe, I'd like to answer a question. I'm gonna answer a question. They wanna, I'm gonna answer a question.
She's gonna ask you questions.
You wanna, yeah, you ask your question, Brooke, but I'm gonna answer a question you can ask several times.
I actually don't really have a question, but it looks, it sounds to me kinda like you guys are looking for feedback as much as you're looking for questions. Like, you come in with a lot of concerns?
Yes.
And I have some of the same concerns, like, as it's about time I get home from work. I've got an hour between when I get home, have to feed my kids, give them a bath, and go to bed. I wanna time to spend time with my kids. So I'm concerned about the travel times. But I really like the idea of combining all the schools into one, and having them mixed classes. My kids are twins, one of the only kids that I have, and I find that it's really helpful for them to be split up. And so I really like the idea of all the schools combining, so they can be in different classes and meet their friends, because they know all people throughout the community, and they really enjoy spending time with them and getting to know all these different people. And I think that for my kids, that would be very helpful for them. Thank you.
I'm gonna answer a question. And, because it's a no-brainer. Okay, as far as school choice goes with Option C, there is no school choice. But, back when we made the Articles of Agreement, it was... No, Option B. Excuse me, Option B. Option C is that other one I threw out there that you might wanna mull over. Anyway, with, with Option B and Option A, there is no school choice. If you have a third grader, they're gonna be in this school. If you have a sixth grader, they're gonna be in, there is no school choice. Period. That's the answer to that question. Originally, when we did the Articles of Agreement, believe me, I know, I was on the Red Committee before the Act 46 Committee. It was harped again and again, what do we do? Is there gonna be school choice? And it's, we will have a possibility to have school choice. It was, it should have never read, if anybody's reading it, as there will be school choice. Okay. Okay, that's what it said. But does it say elementary school level?
Yes.
It does, okay. Originally, when they discussed that, it was a possibility. These are Articles of Agreement, this is what they were going to try to do. Okay. No, no, I'm telling you, I was at these meetings. Okay? And it was, you were there, you were there, I see some other people here. It was, this is what we wanted to look like, this is what we're gonna try to do. It's just like the same thing, a school couldn't close unless there were zero students in it. And you know who the biggest fuss that was from? It was from Wyndham, who elected not to come in anyway. So, these are, the answer to that question is, it should not have been ever said that we're going to have school choice. Because school choice can only be available where there's availability in a building. If everybody wants to come down to New Brook, then we might as well just close all the other two schools and build on in New Brook. Just, just throwing that out there. It's a, you know, I'm saying, so, school choice is only there if there's room in the building. Another question.
Comment.
Hi, just a comment. Tate Erickson, New Fane. And I just wanna thank the Wyndham Central Board for the hard work they've done, and the boards for considering all these options. It's difficult, difficult positions to be in. As a parent of kids on the far reaches of New Fane, I would be daunted to send my kids to Pre-K in Jamaica. Might be a wonderful school, but it'd be well over a half hour each way. Then having parent, kids in multiple grades, to spread them across grades, and then be active participants in those grades as a, as a parent would be daunting. However, equity does mean bringing kids together to have diversity, and so there's not one easy answer. And I wondered about the numbers between Jamaica and Townsend, and how does that compare with New Brook, who's already consolidated, and seems to be doing a great job. Compliments to Superintendent Anupon and Mr. Tabacnik, and all the staff at New Brook. But I'm just wondering, would that be an equitable option? Thank you. Thank you.
Tom, go again. Thanks.
Hi, I have a question for everybody that's still here. We love the feedback, and the questions and the concerns are definitely helpful, but if anybody does have something that is, I would love to see this happen. I personally wanna hear that, and I'm sure I'm not the only one. So if anybody here has something that's like, this is, this thing would be really great, that's, would be huge right now.
Yeah, put it on a note card, come up and talk about it. Either one.
I would just, not that tough. I would just love to see some numbers versus students. Where, where's the savings coming from? Show us. Show us if this somehow is good in any way for our community. And the hassle that you're gonna bring upon parents, grandparents, it's just a nightmare. We want some proof, we want some...
Okay, it's kind of a question, but goes along with what you're talking about. Off the mall, but idea, because I have no idea number-wise, could Jamaica hold a middle school? Could we do sixth, seventh, and eighth grade up there? Because the bigs, separate from, you know, everybody isn't quite as daunting as the littles, and if the littles were, say, in Townsend, and we did Pre-K and kindergarten in Townsend, and the littles were close, I mean, maybe that's a little less scary. Just a thought.
Okay, so, thank you for the feedback, the questions. I'm sorry there aren't answers. I can promise you a timeline, I can promise you a whole lot more answers as we work through this process. Again, it's going to be a long process, and, you know, we'll try and answer, we'll answer things as we get them. I'm sorry?
When is the next meeting?
The next meeting is, well, there's a, the next regular scheduled meeting is August 20th, it's always the third Monday, and the retreat is July 25th, 9 to 5, right here. Publicly warned meeting. Will we call it the order? Come on down. So, we have a lot now for our retreat. I guess I wouldn't mind it if we, like, agreed, I would encourage somebody to make a motion to put a timeline together, retreat or something.
I will move to that, by the, we use the retreat initially foremost to get a timeline together for this process. I second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, any discussion of that on the board? Lindsay moved that we use the retreat to put together, that we use part of the time at the retreat to put together a timeline for the ongoing conversation about where the district goes. Right? And Christina, second. Any discussion yet? Nope? All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? You guys have it. Okay. The other thing that we've talked about, and I think this is kind of key, is, and I don't know if we need a motion for this one, but we would need to do some directing, is to put together, you know, a separate repository of our information, questions, answers, data, you know, numbers, things like that. It's kind of a little varied right now on the Wyndham Central website, and I'd like to see it a little more easily accessible. And, you know, we have, we have grant money. I think we should start looking at spending some of that grant money to get that PR piece out there. Website design, hire somebody to maintain it, keep the things updated, and do that. I don't know if that needs a motion so much, because I dislike agreement and then we can make it happen. Any thoughts on that? Did I cover it all? I mean, help me. Well...
Finalize when you're looking for a retreat.
Okay. Bill says we can finalize that at the retreat and make it happen. Please put your questions in, even if you ask them. We do have two recorders, one for the minutes and one for just questions, but write them down so they get put into the matrix. Please.
And please come back to future meetings, we like your input.
If it's feedback, questions, anything, just write them down and put them in there. We're collecting them. Come right up to the mic, please.
I'm sure the committee worked really hard. I know some of the people, and I know how hard it works. I think you mistake when I was only in marketing.
I agree.
I think you mistake when I was only in marketing.
I agree.
So, if you, because that leaflet that we saw really implied that there were two choices and answers were given, instead of implying that you're seeking input.
Oh, the Jamaica leaflet? We didn't put that out. That was put out by somebody in Jamaica who didn't necessarily have one of you.
Apparently, everybody here felt like they were going to get answers.
Yes, and I, so for that.
So, I think it behooves you to state what the purpose of the meeting will be more clearly, and that it will be more well accepted.
Thank you. Okay.
I just have an idea that would kind of help with, I think the mentoring idea of what people are really worried about, is if they were able to bring, like, the preschool and kindergarten to more of a localized Townsend area, then they could be able to set up some kind of a program where the high school students could go in and help mentor and even like assist in teaching those classrooms. Because then, and you have, you know, you're bringing the community for, you know, the older kids and the younger kids to be able to kind of work together. I just think that'd be really cool.
Thank you.
Hey, Joe, just one other thought on school choice, a lot of discussion on that. Might want to consider a survey, if you guys haven't done it, and ask people if school choice is available at the elementary level, who might take advantage of it, to get some numbers and some ideas of what that would mean, and give you some better information.
Thanks. Okay, so, we don't have any administrative reports, we don't have any new business that I know of, right? No. There's no policy tonight, thank you, Ken. We need to pull the minutes out of the consent agenda, because it lists a board member who's no longer a board member. So we need a motion to pull the minutes out of consent.
I make a motion to pull the minutes.
We just pulled them? Okay, we just pulled them out. So we need to correct the minutes. Fiona is no longer a board member, and we do have the correct Newfane board members.
Alicia O'Donnell was at the meeting, she just wasn't sitting up here, she was sitting in the audience.
Okay, we can add Alicia. I don't think it counts if you don't sit at the big table. You know, we don't have a kiddie table part of the minutes. Okay, so those two corrections, any, I think there are some misspellings of the names of the public, just reading through the list of people that I know, but I think we can put that down to penmanship. And I don't want to even try to correct them, because I don't know the correct spellings, I just know this isn't it. But other than that, are there any other errors, any other things that we need to change in the minutes? Ken?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how this number is, I don't know, even with my glasses on, it looked kind of funny with the punctuation. It says here that it was, Al had asked Lori...
Where are you?
On the bottom of page four, it says, she said the equalized pupil spending would be $510.08. That does not sound right to me.
No, I think it's that many students. I think it's that many students.
The number of students.
It's the number of students, okay.
Equalized student count.
So that should read that the equalized pupil count was 510, not the equalized pupil spending.
That's right. Because if we're at that number right now, we're good. We got it all.
Yeah, yeah.
Talking Richmond.
Okay, we got that changed? Anything else? Oh, yeah. At the last, the last word in that paragraph should be pupils, not people, equalized. Anything else?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Further discussion?
Making sure.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, to approve the minutes as edited. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion still carries. All right, we know when the next meetings are. I hope to see everybody at the retreat here. When we change the date, we really screwed ourselves with facilities, but, you know, Bob will, Bob will give us, Bob will cook us something nice.
I expect entertainment, like a hot line show.
Are we going to have air conditioning?
Yes, fans.
Are we going to have air conditioning?
At least stand here with, like, big fans.
Just fans.
Please.
All right. We can make a motion for air conditioning, Ken, but what it will do to the budget, I don't know. All right, anything else we need to discuss tonight, Charlie?
No, I'd like to make a motion.
There's a motion to adjourn here.
I'll accept.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Wow.
Thank you, everybody.